At this time, we've called a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for November 3rd, 2015, 5:00 PM to order. First items on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what you wishes.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See you none. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the final assessment roles for the 2014 street alley and, or utility street alley improvements, group one. You got anything on that, Steve?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, this was a project constructed in 2014, the larger the three of that particular year. Um, I believe there's ten locations with various improvements and, uh, benefits calculated from the methodology submitted in the engineer's report, which was reviewed and approved by the city council, I believe in January. It is a public hearing, there, I have not received any written comments with regard to the special assessments, and I guess I would recommend that you would just take them one at a time.
Okay. Since it's a public hearing, anybody here that wants, uh, number one Franklin Street, six south to ten south? Second, North Street from, uh, Garden Linden, Linden Street, and second to third, North Street, and third Street, Linden to West Street. Number three, 12th North Street from Broadway to State. State your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Mary Koch, I live at 610 12th Street North. Um, I was in conversation with a neighbor and found out that my assessment is sixty-six percent more than theirs, and I thought that was, I mean, I kind of figured mine would be a little more than, than theirs, which is, um, eleven twenty-six North State. Um, and I did just stop at the office and they gave me an explanation, which it is what it is, I can't change that, but I just thought that sixty-six percent seemed like an awful lot difference, um, for the street frontage that we have. Um, and the other comment I just wanted to make is to give you feedback regarding the sod laying company. I had just replaced all my sod the year before this happened.
Oh, no.
Actually, the summer before, we were notified that it hap- was gonna happen. And so, I had brand-new sod that I was taking care of, and then they came and dumped all their dirt on top of it, and of course, they replaced it all, and the sod quality is good, but the laying quality stinks. And if I had hired the company, they would've had to redo it. I can't mow decently now because I have peaks and valleys in there, so when you mow, you shave half of it off and the other half stays long because there's holes. So, I'm gonna obviously fix that myself sometime, but just wanted to give you that feedback that, um, I wasn't very satisfied with that, um, whole prospect of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Along the same lines, I guess I got a question for Steve. Mine's coming up here later, but anyway, the sod issue? We had the same thing on Franklin Street. What did they ever do? I noticed in the spring they went in and they took some out and replaced some, but...
Uh, Mr. President, sodding is always a difficult, um, process. Uh, the way the contract language is generally written is the contractor comes in, in a window of time, generally from June to, you know, September, growing season, and they have thirty days to water it and grow it. And typically, what happens is you get some really hot days and things start to burn, or, um, you get wet days and it grows really well, so it's kind of out of the hand of the contractor. So, in order to kind of mitigate some of those issues, we've added some watering hours when the contract is o- is past the thirty-day maintenance period. Rather than extending the maintenance period, we have the ability to, to, uh, call the contractor up and say, "Hey, come water it and we'll pay you for it." So, that seems to work a little better. I think your particular roadway was kind of in the middle of that. I could discuss it with my assistant, he might remember it a little bit more. But generally, they, they have thirty days to make it grow, and then it, it reverts to the homeowner as far as maintenance, and we usually send a letter to everyone stating that, "Please water your sod because it's, you know, the maintenance period is over." So, would have to look into any s- specific, uh, circumstances, but that's the general, um, process with regard to sodding.
But watering wasn't a problem.
Okay.
It was chatty work. I mean, it was uneven, humps in it all over.
Well, I believe that they came back, they came back and did some. Um, with regard to 12th North, um, that particular segment of, of roadway is between Broadway and, and State Street, and there was a sanitary sewer main that could no longer even be maintained, it was blocked in several locations, and we simply had to get in there and replace that. If the sewer would've backed up into this person's basement, I think it would've been a worse situation than sod not growing, but we could take a look at the sod if you'd like us to and see if there's anything to do. Obviously, it's not under warranty anymore.
No. Well, I think we just need to have our inspectors kind of watch it a little bit closer because it should've never even got left that way.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Sometimes what happens is the contractor's supposed to have a superintendent on site and he doesn't, and a subcontractor comes to town and our guys are busy someplace else and things get away from us occasionally, but we can, we can try and buckle down on that a little bit.
Okay. Anybody else from 12th North? Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Postle, I live at 611 12th North. I didn't have the problem that Mary didn't, but that's maybe because I did some leveling and stuff of my own on the boulevard before they put the sod down. But my ac- actually, my question was, why didn't they do the end services?
Uh, we typically don't do the end services when it's a main reconstruct, if we don't, if we're not taking out the curb and gutter. In that case, the curb and gutter was in very good shape, it wasn't a total reconstruct with replacement of the curb and gutter. So, we would've replaced them to the trench wall, you know, we could've worked with you if you would've wanted to, but we would've had to especially assess a little bit more on that kind of work because, because then you have to take out the curb and gutter, get into sidewalks and boulevard areas.
Okay.
Kind of depends on what needs to be done and what condition everything is in.
I was a little surprised at the assessment too, because you had told us it was gonna be about eighteen hundred dollars.
Uh, Mr. Postle, I, I don't recall that, I have the engineer's report and it discusses three hundred, or three thousand dollars. The eighteen hundred dollars is if you're on a corner, in particular, there's, there's two parcels on State Street.
Yeah.
They have a front yard on State Street and they were assessed the full benefit on a previous project on, on one of the parcels, so we assign a sixty percent side yard calculation on the other side, so that if you live in the corner, you're not penalized with two front yard calculations. So, sixty percent of three thousand is the eighteen hundred, I don't know if that's what you heard.
Yeah, yeah, it probably is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have other concerns from other sod folks? Did you get any other ones, Mr. Kaler?
Uh, I have not gotten anything, this was, you know, from 2014, so by now, most of those issues hopefully were worked out. I know there, every year you have issues with, uh, maintenance of sod and boulevards, it's just, it's kind of a...
There were a lot of issues back when this was finished up, because I know in the, from sixth to, on Franklin to tenth, I don't know how many people have come and talked to me about that one, and then I know I related to this system and stuff, and that's why I think they came back and did some touch up, but...
I know we had a pretty good punch list on sod-related items in that particular area.
Do we bid that out to different sod companies?
No, we, we bid the project out to a general contractor and then they, they get a subcontractor who typically is, works for the lowest cost and...
Just for your information, I, when they laid that sod, it was two very young boys that looked very inexperienced to me, and even as they were laying it, I should've probably gone out, but I was in a hurry coming and going from work when I noticed it happening. And, yeah, it's, I just kind of figured they were probably college kids, had a summer job, not much training, you know, and I just thought, for a city to hire someone, you would think that they would have a little bit better quality of workmanship than they had. And leveling was the main thing, if they would've leveled it better, you know, I could've gotten it to grow, I mean, it's still, the grass itself looks good, the quality of the sod was good that they did use, but they put it in in little chunks all over and then I have peaks and valleys, so...
You'd have some, uh, authority to work on that subcontract language, wouldn't you, in future sod thing contracts?
Uh, we wouldn't work on the subcontract language, we work on the specifications for the con- the sodding itself, and then the general contractor's responsible for it, yeah.
So, maybe a little stronger language.
Yeah, and we have worked on that, but bear in mind, the, the more difficult you make it, the more expensive it gets, and assessments will increase, but we can certainly work on that.
I think we need to try to get it back as nice as what it was when, before we started, if it's all possible.
I don't disagree.
All right. Number four, Garden Street from Center Street to Eighth South Street. Five is Eight South Street to Garden Street to Payne Street. Six is, uh, Alley Block One sixteen north of Center Street. Eight is Alley Block One oh four north, or south of Center Street. And number nine is Alley Block One sixteen south of Center Street. And then we've got number ten, Sarah Hills, Third Edition. See you no more.
Mr. President, I, I would make one comment on Sarah Hills, we, uh, calculated the special assessment roles. There's one particular par- property owner that owns, I believe, ten of those lots, Reg? And they came, they came out, oh, you, has eight of them? Yeah, eight of them, and he, they came out to about twenty-six thousand dollars per parcel, and he would like to prepay ten thousand dollars per lot, so when we recertify, when we certify these, uh, to the county, if they're approved by the council, we'll deduct that ten thousand, Reg will deposit the check in the appropriate account.
You want that as part of the motion?
Uh, it's entirely up to you, I just want you to be aware of it.
It's, it's gonna happen administratively, because right now, we don't have the check, and so we don't do anything until we get the check.
Gotta have the money.
Or panties, or dollar bills, whichever he wishes to bring in, so...
No more discussion, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution?
I'll offer the motion, closing the public hearing and offering the resolution to waive the reading and to adopt the final assessment rules for 2014 for group one project.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, uh, waive the reading, any more discussion? See you none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 2A, number one, consider a resolution approving the petition from Philip Rondru, Chief Manager of Centrosota Real Estate Services LLC, doing business at State Street Apartments LLC to amend the city's comprehensive plan to allow high-density residential land use in place of a public semi-public land use at fifteen North Minnesota Street.
Mr. President, before we start...
Straight State Street, sorry about that.
Before we start discussion on this, just for disclosure on my end, that I've done in the past, uh, for this item and the next item, is there was a member of Senate that did own this building, uh, we have voted to dissolve, and I was never a financial investor in that property, um, so I don't believe there's a conflict anymore, but I just wanted to disclose that for the purposes of this next two items.
Anything on that?
Well, Mr. President, City Council members, as you, as you notice that the, following the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval after October 29th, 2015 meeting, so, uh, I think we all know, uh, where fifteen North State Street is, uh, currently, uh, housing the school district, eighty-eight offices and, and other facilities that are there. Uh, materials pertaining to the comprehensive plan, the issues that were brought before the Planning Commission, and, uh, I would anticipate that the, you know, there's no budgetary items at this point in time, so just talking about a change in use of that facility in order to redevelop it for, uh, a different purpose that it was originally constructed for and are used for.
And I should note, Phil is here if we want him to speak, he said he'd give us a few minutes if we have some questions for him, or, I'd maybe like to hear what, from him what's going on, if he wants to come up and speak.
Yep. Name and address, just for the record.
Good evening, I'm Philip Rondo, um, my address is, uh, 24036 167th Street in Big Lake, Minnesota. Um, I, I guess I'll answer questions, uh, in a thirty-thousand-foot version, uh, we're planning fifty-seven units of market-rate apartments, uh, in the school. Uh, right now, the design, uh, from the exterior of the building, uh, will not change. Um, we, the building, as you probably already know, is on the National Historic Register already, um, we have been approved for, uh, historic tax credits, uh, on the project, uh, we, with part one of the three-part approval process. Uh, we are currently finalizing construction plans for that, our intent is to, uh, start, uh, with some of the removal of the interior items, uh, later this fall yet, and, uh, most of the construction you won't see because it is all on the inside of the building. The only new construction would be, uh, the actual parking garage, which will be in the existing parking lot on the Washington side, where I guess there was, there was a school there before, I forget the name of it.
Emerson.
Emerson School, yeah. So, there will be a new, uh, parking garage there, uh, we will also be creating two small parking lots on the State Street side, which I guess I'll call the northwest and northeast corners, uh, in order to satisfy the parking requirements for the project. But, uh, for the most part, uh, the building, as you see it today, uh, from an exterior standpoint, will remain unchanged, uh, just some minor tuck pointing and some repair of the existing materials is all we're planning for that.
Mr. President.
Any questions you might have?
I'm, uh, yes, it has to do with the parking situation. I'd appreciate it if you could, uh, describe the parking garage that you have in mind, I mean, is it a, you know, a four-story, uh, uh, something that you drive up in, or is it, uh, single-car garages, or would you describe, uh, in more detail what you have in mind when you say, "There will be a parking garage"?
Sure, yep, absolutely. Uh, it is just a one-story slab-on-grade, I guess is what I'll call it, so we'll, we'll basically be utilizing as much as we can, the existing elevations that are out there, uh, but it is only one story tall, um, there's forty-eight stalls, uh, in that actual garage, and the exterior materials, we are going to try to match the existing material as much as possible, understanding that the materials may not exist anymore, but we're gonna do the best we can to try and match that.
So, it's a one-story, uh, structure that will have, uh, forty-eight stalls? Now, is that gonna be forty-eight separate, uh, garage door openers, or just, uh, you, a person would enter, uh, and then find her...
Yep.
Assigned stall.
Correct, one, one in and one out. Yeah, this will, there will not be separate doors for each stall.
Okay. And then, uh, there, uh, Mr. President, you know, there's been, uh, some talk about uh, what the, uh, limits are, uh, be- given the historic designation, um, and I know you have told us that, uh, that the exterior cannot change, are there any limits to, uh, what can happen on the interior?
Uh, yes, a- and actually, we've actually gone through a redesign on the inside already. Uh, we actually had two representatives from the State Historical Preservation Office come down and actually do a walkthrough of the building with us. Um, one of their concerns was, uh, trying to leave the hallways even, um, in existing, um, our intent originally was, um, from a financial performance standpoint, obviously, hallways are common areas and they're non-revenue generating space, so we try to minimize those, but, um, at their request, we've actually, uh, utilized the, the existing hallways the way they are, and they will remain the same, both size-wise and material-wise. Another request that they had was, um, to try to salvage as many of the, what I'll call the demising walls between the existing classrooms. Um, we did do that, we, we took a look at, uh, the original design we had, um, we were able to salvage probably about ninety-five percent of those, uh, it did result in a reduction of two of the units, but we felt that, uh, if that was something that was very important to SHIP-O, it just made sense, and it wasn't a huge financial burden for us to reduce those two units down. So, so there were a number of restrictions that they, I don't wanna say restrictions, they were more of, uh, a wish list or requests from SHIP-O to try and save as much as we could inside, and so we, we did take that into consideration and we're on our second design now with that.
And just one more question, what about flooring?
Uh, most of it's gonna stay in place. Um, we have, uh, with the different additions that were put on, for example, the nineteen-fifty-five addition has a lot of, uh, VCT, uh, there are, which is vinyl composite tile.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of, uh, the people that have looked at it, uh, remembered as the alphabet floor in the, in the old kindergarten area, um, and so those are, those may not have historic value, but they have kind of a cultural value, I guess, in town, and a lot of people have, uh, actually remember the letter that they sat on in kindergarten. So, uh, our intention is to actually salvage that, uh, and most of the wood flooring in a lot of the other areas will actually remain in place.
Thank you.
The biggest question I hear is, are you taking, gonna take pets?
Are we gonna take what?
Pets.
Haven't determined that yet. Um, i- it is not an age restricted, it is market-rate apartments is what we're putting in, so it's not income or age restricted at this point in time, uh, based on the information we got from the latest, uh, market study that was performed by the city, we didn't feel the need to try and do that.
Thank you, anybody else?
How many parking stalls would you have in the front of the building on the property?
There are, I believe there's roughly a total of about ninety stalls, I believe, uh, when you take in the parking garage and then the two small parking lots on the two corners.
Okay.
Uh, I believe the city requires one and a half stalls per unit, and we're considerably in excess of that requirement.
Okay.
So, I do have a little bit of a site plan, if, if after the meeting, if you folks wanna take a look at the site plan, I'd be more than happy to share that with you.
I just have one other, I, forgive me, I just have one other question, I apologize.
One more.
One more, one more, one more, one more. Now, you're the Chief Manager of Centrosota Real Estate Services.
Correct.
Um, yeah, I was, uh, can you, maybe you've given us this information before, uh, but can you tell me what other experience, um, this, uh, entity has, this particular entity has had in doing this type of project?
Uh, Centrosota itself has been involved in, I'm gonna give you a list here, but it's probably about a dozen or so, what I'll call multi-family projects, uh, involved in different capacities, where we have been predominantly the contractor and/or consultant for the projects. This will actually be the first project where we will be the actual developer of it. But we have probably, over the last fifteen years, we've done about a, about a dozen projects, any, ranging from about twenty-five units up to a hundred units. So, yeah, I, and I could certainly provide you with a list if that's what you wanted to do for experience on that, but, yeah, our capacity to date again has been the actual general contractor building them, and then acting as a consultant on some of them as well, where other generals have built them. All right, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? Entertain a resolution?
I'll offer the motion to, uh, approve the petition from Philip Rondru, Chief Manager of Centrosota Real Estate, LLC.
It's a resolution, I'll, and I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to adopt a resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See you none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 2A, number two, consider motion approving the petition from Philip Rondru, Chief Manager of Cent- Centrosota Real Estate Services LLC, doing business at State Street Apartments LLC, to rezone the property at fifteen North Minnesota Street from our two single-family residence to our three multi-family residence.
What I can add from the Planning Commission meeting, uh, we had a couple neighbors that voiced a few concerns, and, you know, one of them was, first was the parking, which, you know, um, Philip, you know, said they're gonna have enough parking on site, um, uh, one of the other neighbors was concerned, uh, when it was, uh, zoned, single and two-family, and Dave Schnoberg answered that question, it was in the sixties, and, you know, everybody was in favor of the project, um, as far as the neighbors and, uh, the Planning Commission. And, uh, I may add, uh, one of the neighbors was concerned whether it'd be creating a lot of dust or activity with the construction, but Philip, you know, said, majority of the construction's gonna be the interior of the building, you know, there will be some with a parking garage, but, you know, so we recommended approval.
Anybody else? See you none, entertain a motion?
I'll offer, then, the petition to approve.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the petition, any more discussion? See you none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no.
Motion carries. Item 3B, consider re- recommendation from the Reinvest New Ulm Committee to consider half-ten sales tax reauthorization for, in 2016, and direct staff and committee to prepare recommendation and timeline for the two thousand, or for the November 2016 general election.
Mr. President, City Councilors, uh, the loss committee changed their name on unanimous vote to, uh, Reinvest New Ulm Committee, uh, and, uh, part of the discussion at the last meeting was to recommend to the city council that, uh, that the, that the council authorize staff to, you know, kind of prepare and, and shoot for the November 2016, uh, general election. As you're probably well aware, we can only have this put on the ballot in a November general election, so that's 2016 or 2018. The, uh, November of 2020, uh, would be too late, uh, to get the, uh, sales tax reauthorized without having to wait a year to go through the process. So, the, uh, the, the committee felt that, uh, no matter how that this is structured, if you were to say, uh, we hold the election in 2016, we go to the legislature, we've got four opportunities to go to the legislature after 2016, so we have 2017, 18, 19, and 20, uh, to, uh, get reauthorization. And, uh, if, if we took it to the 2016 election and it didn't pass, that things could be modified and they could try again in 2018 to get it passed the city council, in which case you'd have, uh, 2019 and 2020 to go to the legislature. So, the, uh, the concept is, is, is to shoot for the 2016 general election, uh, to play it safe, but the final decision about when the reauthorization would actually start and occur and what projects would be built, that, uh, you know, that, the, the committee hasn't gotten that far, and we'll be coming to the council with something probably in the, uh, May, June, July area, because it has to be approved by August into the county for the language for the ballot. So, there's a timeline, uh, it's in, it's included in your, your packet as to, uh, the two, the two tracks, the 2016 or the 2018 track, and I think the... And I think the uh, the committee is just saying, we'd rather uh try for twenty sixteen, and if we don't make it, that's fine. But we'd rather try for twenty sixteen ju- and play it safe. And uh, then we've got four years in case the legislature decides they don't want to do things like this or like this year. Due to the remodeling in the Capitol, the legislative session is gonna be six weeks long approximately. And they're just not gonna have a lot of time to do a lot of stuff. And so this year doesn't look good for, you know, if we were to go in for a sales tax or reauthorization, it probably wouldn't look good because they're just gonna be busy on on the big stuff that, you know, we don't know until we actually do it. So the concept, I guess, is, is to try for twenty sixteen general election, uh, to get the voters to approve that. And then in twenty seventeen, eighteen, uh, nineteen or or twenty, uh, get approval from the legislature. And then get on with the, with the projects that have been selected. But again, I'm just reiterating, we haven't even solicited the projects yet. We're hoping to do that in January, February, and March and then do the analysis on, you know, uh, the projects that we believe are are good for the community. And then we'll bring that to the city council for review and but the timeline is uh, it's doable and it probably gives the the city in Ulm the most flexibility. And if if you don't get it the first time, you can change it, modify it, and try for the second election.
I know we have Counselor Mack on that committee. What's, I I guess I'm really concerned about that timeline. You're basically seven mon- no, it'd be eight months to get this project ready to go. I'm nervous.
It's aggressive, but we've gotta have our ducks in a row. And I guess bottom line is if we feel by, you know, June, if we're not there, then then we'll take time. But right now, we're committed to try to meet two times a month and uh, you know, put the most effort into each meeting and and move forward.
Yeah, I know you got really excellent committee members that are working hard on this.
Correct.
And they all have the same ultimate end goal, but it's it's an aggressive timeline for sure. So, uh, with that, I'll make the motion to approve this recommendation.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I just have a question. Um, I noticed in the agenda for the renewal committee uh that uh you're expecting Senator Doms and Representative Torkelson. Has their presence been confirmed? Are you expecting them this evening?
I uh tried to verify that they were going to be showing up this evening and we were assured that our meeting was on their calendar.
Oh.
And that's about as good as it is.
All right.
They're aware of it.
All right.
Uh, so we'll see if they can make it.
All right.
And my only comment to say, I appreciate what you said, Counselor Mack, that if you're not ready to go, you need to pull back because I think that's critical, that we do this and we do it right. And if we're ready to go, let's go. But if we're not, I'd rather not rush it through and 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 not do it appropriate appropriately.
That's why we're taking a couple steps and then we're making a short order application form, which will be, we direct the staff to start writing. And then we'll have the long form, but, you know, we can get some ideas out there to get the people's input. And then they get a taste of what what it's gonna take to get involved, to present their project. And then uh, you know, in a, in like a two-phase, you know, short form and then the long form and and.
Yeah, I think this might be a little bit different than than maybe what happened last time and the fact that this is gonna be more more citizen-driven. That that a group of people who want a project to be considered for local option sales tax, they actually have to explain what the benefit's gonna be to the community, what the budget will be, how the money will be spent. What's the, what is the payback to the community? Is it regional value or is it just, you know, a small group of people thinking this is a great project? They have to do all of that and the community's gonna, you know, accept all those and and prioritize and rank and and do all that work. So it's gonna be an interesting process. But some of the work will be on the, will be the responsibility of the group that wants to submit something for consideration. Uh, they might need some help from staff to kind of, you know, guide them and how do you get estimates of project costs and things like that. But but it will be uh, the information is coming from the residents themselves or from groups of people. Not from a committee just sitting around saying, what what do we think is the best thing for the community? It should be driven by the citizens.
And I just have to say um that I also agree with the um, the sped-up timeline at two thousand sixteen. I wanna see us be aggressive and sometimes these things seem to drag out and take so long. And I think people like to see action and keep things moving. But I also agree with what Counselor Schultz said, that, you know, we have to have the wherewithal to, if we're not there and not have all the information to be able to pull back and say.
You're also considering the reauthorization of, in other words, what year we're gonna end the present one, when we're gonna start the new one?
Correct. Whether it be.
That'll be part of it.
Correct. Whether it be twenty eighteen or twenty twenty. It's just, we have to, we don't even know what projects.
Right, right. Okay. Any more questions, concerns? Do we have a?
Yep, we had a motion and a second.
Can I second? Still talking.
Okay. Any more discussion? See you none. On favor, say aye.
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 Close no. Motion carries. Item four A, consider motion to receive a memorandum from Matthew Schnackenberg?
Schnackenberg.
Schnackenberg? Public Finance Management Incorporated on amount of tax increment financing required for TIF District R nine and district staff to proceed with a modification to the development agreement with Minnesota Strauss LLC for the construction of an apartment building at one oh three to one twenty-three South Minnesota Street. Brian?
Mr. President City Councilors, at the last meeting, uh, you directed staff to work uh with the developer of this project to be able to come up with a number that would fit into the the development agreement as to how much tax increment would be made available for this project. The underlying uh issue here is that the developer needs to tell us what that number is. Okay? And, uh, you know, we could, we could make some assumptions, but it's, you know, uh, it's, it's, uh, we want to be fairly accurate. We just can't say, you know, three hundred thousand dollars for twenty-five years at two percent interest rate, you know. That that note that the developer is is trying to acquire, that's something he negotiates with his financial lending institution. And so those terms we don't have. So what we've asked is that the the uh, the numbers be placed into that agreement ref- that reflect whatever the principal and the interest is for the time period for that note. And as soon as we get that number from the developer, we'll insert it in. And then I can't come up with that number and and the developer, if he hasn't gone to the bank and negotiated that out yet, he can't give me that number yet either. But what what we heard from the city council was that we would authorize, and, you know, as enough TIF, tax increment financing funds to cover that note, no more, no less. So whatever number he gives us, if he says that's, that's with principal and interest, it's uh one point nine million dollars, that's the number. If that's what it takes to pay that note off, you know, it won't be two million, it won't be one point eight. It'll be whatever it takes, principal and interest, to make that note whole. So that's what we would propose to put in there. So, uh, and that and that's the recommendation, uh, you know, that Mr. Schnackenberg, you know, put together and basically says, as soon as you get that number, I can tell you what that, you know, I can tell you what to put in that, in that slot.
And the preliminary indications are uh that they uh, the developer will be borrowing approximately nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I understand, yes. So if, you know, literally, like I said, if if we knew that he's gonna borrow nine hundred thousand dollars at five percent interest rate for twenty-five years, that's just a mathematical calculation. You can come up with with what it takes to pay that back. But since the city's not privy to that negotiation, we don't know what that interest rate's gonna be and we don't know what that twenty-five years or twenty years or whatever that that magical uh date for the note is. That's something that that has to come from from the developer and their and their finance area. So I think we've come to terms.
Right.
Uh, the developer is here. If he's got any, you know, uh, questions or comments that he wants to make, you know, obviously the, he's been to the podium once or twice before and, uh, but I think we're in agreement that we're following what the city council basically said, you know, we were to do. So it just takes one more step and we'll, we're pretty close to it. It's just that there's certain things the developer has to do yet.
So Mr. Cratch, is there anything you do want to add or no?
Jim Cratch, uh, Courtland. No, it's um, pretty much like the, the development agreement started out at with the four point seven number in that section. And uh, it's a learning process. We could've done it a little smoother than we have, but um the bank and your consultant have started the process. I'm just gonna sit on the sidelines waiting for them to conclude it, so. And it depends pretty much on what you do here tonight.
We're gonna get it done. I'm gonna offer the motion.
I'm gonna second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. On favor, say aye.
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 Close no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Item five A, first reading ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero four, fourth, fifth series amending section five point five of the city code, City of New Ulm relative to liquor license and regulations. Roger? Anything?
Uh, ordinance number fifteen zero zero four, fifth series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance amending section five point five zero, the city code of the City of New Ulm. Be ordained by the city council of the City of New Ulm, section one, that section five point five zero, the city code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended to add the following subdivision. Subdivision four, athletic events at the New Ulm Civic Center. The city council may grant a permit to a holder of an on-sale intoxicating liquor license issued by the city to dispense intoxicating liquor at a public athletic event or series of public athletic events located at the New Ulm Civic Center. Now, withstanding the provisions of section five point five zero subdivision three A, the city council may grant one such permit to cover an entire season of athletic events of a sports team that has leased space to conduct its athletic events at the Civic Center. B, the licensee must be engaged to dispense intoxicating liquor at an athletic event or a series of athletic events held by a person or organization that has a signed agreement to use the Civic Center to host its athletic events. C, the licensee may dispense intoxicating liquor only to individuals attending the athletic event. D, any such permit that is issued under this section shall take effect at twelve oh one AM on July one and shall expire at midnight of the following June thirty unless a different period is authorized by the city council and its approval. But in no event shall a permit be issued for a period longer than one year. The permit shall be conspicuously posted in the licensed premises during the entire permit period. E, any such permit granted hereunder is subject to refocation or suspension pursuant to city code section five point zero six. F, sufficient security personnel shall be on duty during all times that alcoholic beverages are sold or dispensed under any such permit. The permit holder may supply its own security personnel. The proposed permit holder must submit a plan for security at its events along with its permit application. And such plan must be approved by the chief of police and the city council prior to the issuance of a permit. G, the proposed permit holder shall submit certificates of insurance as set forth in five point five zero subdivision three G. A proposed permit holder may submit one certificate of insurance to cover the whole season or a series of athletic events. Any such certificate must be submitted at least thirty days prior to the first event covered by the permit. Any changes in insurance that occur during the duration of the permit must be brought to the attention of the city within twenty-four hours of the change and in no event later than the beginning of the next scheduled event covered by the permit. H, the city council may impose additional requirements or conditions on the granting of a permit as it deemed reasonable and appropriate. I, all other non-inconsistent provisions of five point five zero subdivision three above apply to a permit issued under this subdivision. Uh, section two, at section five point five zero subdivision three, the city code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended to read as follows. Subdivision three, alcoholic beverages at city-owned facilities and parks for public events. H, law enforcement officers, except for sales made pursuant to a permit issued under the provisions of five point five zero subdivision four below. Such number of law enforcement officers as the chief of police may require or such other or other security personnel as approved by the chief of police shall be on duty at the event during all times that alcoholic beverages are sold or dispensed. The sponsoring individual or organization shall be responsible for securing and compensating such law enforcement officers or approved security personnel at the prevailing rates. Uh, section three, the subdivision five point five zero of the city code of the City of New Ulm is hereby mended to be renumbered as follows. Subdivision four, uh, exception, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced thirty days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication adopted by the city council of the City of New Ulm this blank day of blank twenty fifteen.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, now the permit holder will also have to have an actual liquor license, right?
No.
No, okay.
They would um be allowed to engage with a licensee, an existing licensee.
Okay, okay. But the um, so um, liquor can be dispensed only while events are taking place.
Correct.
Uh, and only to people who are in attendance. And the uh, as to security, um, the permit holder needs to have a plan and that plan needs to be approved.
Yes, I think the distinction here, the existing provisions in the code for events on city property required um the applicant to make arrangements to have licensed officers on site. The proponents of leasing, the Civic Center for the hockey team wanted to arrange for their own security. And this allows the council and the chief to have some input into determining their satisfaction level with what those arrangements are.
Okay, thank you. Any more concerns?
Nope, just first reading.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Uh, item five B, first reading ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero five, fifth series amending section nine point two oh, the city code, City of New Ulm relative to heritage preservation landmarks.
May I offer a motion to waive the reading of this as simply as just a national, adding the National Guard armory is her, her just heritage preservation landmark. It's, I don't know if we need to read the whole thing.
Okay.
If everybody's okay with that.
I second.
And it's not a real long one, but it, I think we can.
We got a motion and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. We'll go on to item five C, first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero six, fifth series amending section two point nine nine of the city code, City of New Ulm relative to schedule of city fees.
I'm gonna offer the same motion here, maybe just have city staff or talk about what the fees that are recommended for changes.
Right, the actual ordinance just changes the the year.
Yeah, Mr. President City Councilmember, the staff has has gone, every department has gone through their own fees. They've looked at them. They've tried to make a determination as to appropriateness. Uh, and what I mean by that is photocopies can't cost ten dollars a page. They have to be close to what it costs to make a photocopy. Uh, so we've gone through that uh, uh, process. The items that you see highlighted in blue, uh, we've got some cemetery uh fees and charges that uh, that have been changed, uh, you know, the the costs have been adjusted, you know, for for those. It'd be your grave openings and things like that, so we've looked at that. And then others would be the, you know, construction and development fees. You'll notice exactly on page eighty-one, which is reflecting uh, just a a large variety of uh items there. The fixed fee uh has been changed and as well as uh, you know, all the way down to, you know, what a variance might cost. Just, and that's just taking into account the, you know, the paperwork process, the the wages, the labor involved in getting those items processed through the various boards. The largest uh, you know, fee that uh, we have in that particular area, obviously, is that seven thousand dollar uh TIF establishing fee. And that's, that's twenty-five years of paperwork when we enter into one of these, you know, like in the housing TIF. So it, that's to cover those costs. So other than that, uh, those are probably the biggest categories where we saw any changes.
So we don't, excuse me, we don't know what the fee was before? Like on that seven thousand, what was it before? We just have what it's changed to?
Six. Six thousand?
Mr. Chair, I know this is the first reading of this ordinance, so I just wanna make a, a comment. I know on the first page, there's a miscellaneous, um, license fee, and one of them happens to be daycare inspection fees of fifty dollars, it's not a very big fee. But we have a really serious daycare issue in our community, and not only in our community, in our county and in our state, and it's at a crisis stage where business owners are, can't get people to come back to work after kids, they have, their, their employee has had a child. There's a little bit of an underfoot of trying to put together a committee to address this issue. Um, they wanna try and remove as many barriers as possible, so we can get new daycares to open or current daycare centers to expand. Um, so we haven't even had our official first meeting yet, but when I saw that, I'm like, well, maybe there's one little tiny piece, and it's not very much of a big revenue, but I'd like us as councillors to think what either waving, I know it takes time for inspectors to get out there, but if we can get rid of as many barriers as possible, so we can, we need desperately need daycare in our community. Um, our businesses need it, so there might be some joint ventures there, but let's think about that before we approve the final fees for next time.
Well, and perhaps, uh, at our next meeting, we can, uh, have, uh, staff talk about what, you know, how much time that takes and how often it has to be done and that's.
I'd like to know a little more about that. I just happened to run and saw that this morning, so.
Any others?
So I offered a motion to a waived reading for that, so I don't know if we sec-, anybody seconded that yet?
Second.
Got a motion, second waived reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries. Item five D, consider motion approving the lease agreement with Minnesota Music Hall of Fame for a five-year period under the terms and conditions as outlined in said agreement.
Still moved.
Second.
You got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries. Item six A, consider acceptance of list of claims paid and approved list to be paid. Claims paid in amount of ten million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and approved list claims to be paid in amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries.
Mr. President, I'll move, uh, uh, to suspend the rules for action on two different addendum items, one of them being appointment of someone to the heritage preservation, and secondly, to talk about the closing of Target.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Any more, uh, then we'll go on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries. First one on a new business, consider motion confirming the appointment of Karakoff to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion, a second to approve it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope, motion carries. Item number two, Target.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President, I asked to have this put on the agenda tonight, and I think we all heard yesterday devastating news in our community that the Target store is closing on January thirtieth. Um, loss of almost a hundred employees, um, loss of a Target, or an anchor store in our community. I think I certainly was taken aback by this, um, decision by the corporate office. Within a very short amount of time, twenty-four hours, about eleven thousand people have joined at Save Target Facebook website, which is almost the amount of people in our, in our city. Um, certainly very, um, wonderful corporate office that has some great jobs and a good store that we all, um, enjoy. I think as city councillors and as elected staff, that we need to do, if there's any chance of, of saving that store, it's gonna have to come from us. And we know corporate makes some pretty difficult rules, and when they make their decisions, they stand by them quite often, however, if we don't at least try, um, we know that, we know what the end result is. So I would like to have that discussion here tonight, if, uh, people feel the same way, that we could ask city staff to set up an emergency meeting with corp-, uh, Target Corporate and several of our councillors and mayor. Um, I know the mayor's been inundated with phone calls and, as well as we, the rest of us, but I wanted to see what, what the rest of us felt, I believe.
Well, uh, Mr. President, bef- before we, uh, get into talking about what we possibly could do, I'd like to talk a little bit, uh, about the, about the process and the rules, uh, that apply. Now, um, I, there, I confirmed, uh, with a community development director that there's no state or federal rule or that requires, uh, Target to give the city advance notice of this type of closure. And so, uh, this came as much to, as a surprise to, uh, uh, us as to anyone else in the community. We didn't, we didn't have any advance notice of this, and more importantly, there's no requirement of a, of an advance notice. And the other thing, I, you know, is just talking in terms of process, um, as far as, um, uh, you know, working to save a business or, uh, recruit a new business if the, uh, existing business can't be saved. Essentially, uh, the City of New Ulm, uh, has some, uh, input, but we also, uh, more or less contract with, uh, the chamber and the, you know, other entities. So I'd like to make sure that we, we talk a little bit about that, because, because we don't act alone uh, as, uh, as, uh, re- as recruiters of businesses, so. I just want, I wanna summarize, if, if the, if we could, if the city manager could please just summarize, you know, what, what, uh, the city, uh, pays for economic development of this type and, and who does it? And so the people who are watching and listening understand what the city's role is.
Okay, Mr. President, city councillors, as you're well aware, in, in the budget, we've got a, uh, an amount set aside for a retail, uh, specialist that is employed by the Chamber of Commerce, and we provide the funding for that as well as, uh, as for industrial economic development through the EDC. We spend, I believe, about thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the retail specialists, which would apply to the, you know, more retail commercial entities, uh, in our community, to entice them to come to our community or find a better location for them in, in, in existing business in our own community. And with the EDC, we spent, uh, the city spends fifty thousand dollars, which is our statutory cap, we can't spend any more than that. And the PUC spends approximately another forty-three or, you know, forty-five thousand dollars. So what we give the EDC runs around almost ninety-five thousand dollars. And what we give the Chamber of Commerce to deal with more retail-oriented business runs around thirty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, uh, we, we contract with the chamber for, for that retail, uh, activity. We, we can't donate money to the chamber, so, but we can contract for specific, uh, work to be done for us, and one of those things that we've, we've asked, or the chamber asked us to fund is, is that retail specialist. And that person has been, uh, uh, it, that kinda morphed from, from, you know, earlier positions that were more downtown, you know, promoting the business district, uh, to, you know, probably over the last ten or twelve years to what, what that position is today. So this is a new position, that's a, you know, a little bit of, uh, some of the old jobs, but much more, uh, updated than, than what it, what it started out with about ten years ago. So, I guess, we do contract with the, uh, New Ulm Chamber of Commerce to provide, uh, those duties. We contract with the EDC to provide industrial, uh, uh, activities. And then when they bring somebody in, our community development director and the rest of the staff, then, uh, see what we can do, you know, with our city loans and things like that. So the initial contact is, is historically, uh, chamber for the retail and, and, uh, the EDC for industrial. Now, some communities might have, uh, the industrial part rebuilt right into their, into their city organization. Uh, I just saw a news article here in the last probably week where, uh, a community had just, had just hired a new, uh, economic developer. Well, New Ulm chose to have a separate entity, a non-city employee performed that particular activity. And I think that model was then mimicked by the chamber in, in doing the, the retail, uh, specialist, that non-city employee, that, that the chamber is probably the most likely, uh, good spot for that person to reside and be employed. So that's our, in all total, uh, you know, we're a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we pay to two different entities to provide, uh, retail and industrial economic development services.
I can tell you that I had a meeting with Ms. Knopf, um, this afternoon, and her comment was, she's all over this. She's tried her best to try and, um, climb the Target corporate ladder to try and find out more information about, you know, why we're closing, what, um, is there anything we can do? She, it's, boy, it's tough to get anywhere up through that corporate ladder, she's really having difficulty. The other side, she's also taking a look at, okay, if that does happen, what can, what can we start doing? What can we start looking at? So she's already got plan A and plan B, so she's, I've been pretty impressed with, uh, Ms. Knopf and her, her abilities in this area. But I still would like to try and see us, um, ask city staff to try, and maybe we involve them in that meeting, so, I don't know.
And I think, uh, one of the things, I guess, to kinda keep in mind, uh, you know, you know, most of the city council are, you know, are, if not lifelong residents, you've been, you know, in the city a long time. You know, the Alternative Learning Center used to be a, something before it is what it is now. The Runnings, I believe, has moved four times in this community into a bigger facility and, and, and their ex-buildings changed. So the, the community is always changing, you know, even from small businesses, you know, going out of business or morphing into bigger. So, you know, sometimes you, we lose track of maybe when one door closes, another one might open. You know, it might be six months or two years later, but something will happen there. Uh, and, uh, so, you know, although we probably hate to see, you know, Target leave, uh, I'm kind of an optimist in these things, and that will, the building will be used, it will not, you know, sit empty. Somebody will see an opportunity, and it will be, in all likelihood, something that New Ulm, you know, would like to have. So. And I think that's the, the chamber's job, is, you know, that retail specialist, that's their opportunity to perform the activity that we contract for.
But I think before we get to having to try and find something to fill that area, I wanna make darn sure that we've exhausted all opportunities to save Target.
So specifically, you're asking that, uh, staff work, uh, with Ms. Knopf to make an effort to, uh, contact Target and make sure we understand, uh, if this, uh, uh, can be changed or if there's.
There's any, any potential options for us to keep that store open? I don't know what that is, but we don't know if we don't ask.
I, I would just put out there that, uh, staff will, will pursue any direction the city council wishes us to go. But I would, uh, probably have all correspondence and maybe the important telephone calls, uh, done by the, the mayor of New Ulm. Because, uh, to be quite honest, I think, uh, you know, when they say the mayor of New Ulm's on the phone, that's different than the city manager. And I think that, we need, if you're gonna pursue this action, that's the most, I think, the most leverage that we can do is, is to utilize the, uh, the, the mayor's office and that.
I agree, and I was, I was thinking, if we need to have a contingency to head up there, the mayor should be driving the van.
Yeah.
Well, maybe the mayor should be the passenger and driving the van.
Love a professional driving.
There you go, professional driving, make sure we get there.
Well, we'll see what, what we can, you know, what we can do, uh, see who we can contact, and then, uh, you know, you know, you know, the mayor and staff will, you know, work together and see what can get put together. You know, we may find.
We can do the best we can, we might hit blocked walls, but at least we can't say we didn't try.
Well, just, just for the councils, uh, I'm gonna use a big word, edification, uh, I have been, I have.
Oh, very nice, this is why we call on the mayor.
I have been on the phone, I've been on, on, uh, uh, sending emails from, uh, the governor to several other people, uh, of, that I think were, are pretty powerful people. And, um, hopefully I'm using the correct language to, uh, get them to like what I'm talking about, so. Um, we're starting, but I, I do love the citizens of New Ulm because
Eleven thousand.
Ninety-five percent or better of the people were always positive, there's always some that, uh, but, you know, using an old, old phrase, would complain if they got hung with a new rope, so, uh, some people you can't please, and I understand that, it's a hard time for me, but I, I do understand that, but, um, we're, we're, yes, the mayor is out there working already.
Great. So do we need a motion and to make that directive? Or don't you need it?
I can take direction pretty well. I, I know where you wanna go.
And I'd like to be part of that, um, trip to the cities if we make one. If, if at all possible.
Sounds great, any more discussion? If not.
Well, I just have one more question. Um, now, uh, can, um, would it be appropriate for the, uh, city to, uh, put a, some sort of posting on this Facebook group uh, to let, uh, the, uh, social media know, uh, what we're doing?
Sure. City could do it, mayor could do it.
All right, I mean, we're, we're on tape here.
Right, good idea. Take care of it, mayor.
All right.
Take care of it, mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, but no more business? Meeting adjourned.